Going to do the public hearings. Clerk call the roll.
Counselors Cadim?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Sampson? President Kamara? And Vice President Pereira?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion open the public hearing.
Second.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number one, poll location Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid. For two new solely owned polls located and one solely owned anchor as followed. High Street, two new poll locations and one new anchor. Install two new solely owned polls and one solely owned anchor on High Street between Franklin Street and Pine Street. Proposed Poll Six will be installed approximately 100 feet northerly of existing Poll Five on High Street. Proposed Poll Seven will be installed 100 feet northerly of proposed Poll Six on High Street. And proposed anchor will be installed on the northerly side of proposed Poll Seven in accordance with the plan number 31051185. Any proponents? Could you state your name? Please.
Aaron Roy, 1250 Brayton Point Road, Somerset, representing National Grid. Good evening, City Council members. National Grid is proposing and the customer at 439 Pine Street is proposing two new solely owned polls for electric and one solely owned anchor on High Street. The customer at 439 Pine Street, the old Lincoln School requires three-phase power. In order to do that, extend the pole line from existing Poll Five located in front of 159 High Street approximately 200 feet north to the corner of Pine and High Street where the overhead power will end and the underground power to 439 Pine Street will continue to their transformer. That's about it.
I have a question.
Counselor C five, Counselor Ms. Reprozo.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. I understand that you're here representing National Grid, but I have a major concern that you're putting up these polls, the National Grid puts up these polls, and it takes forever to get the other pole down. If it's a new pole, that's one thing, but on the other poles that go up, that second pole stays there from Dunkin' Donuts on Pleasant Street to St. Anthony and Patterwood Church, there's eight poles. And if you go through the Dunkin' Donuts, the drive-through, I know it takes time, but if you go through the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through there, there is a pole right near the drive-through. That pole has ivy growing all the way up. It took time for the ivy. I don't know what you can do to let us know when other people will come and take their wiring off. And I know it's not National Grid's fault.
No, right, so the system that everybody uses, I'm sure you're aware, it's, I can't think of the top of my head, but everybody uses these systems. So when they're done with their work, they move it down to the next company that, depending on what's on the pole, because every pole is different, the poles that you're talking about in Bedford and Pleasant Street not only have electric Verizon cable, they have fiber that's owned by the city. I don't know if it's owned by the city, but it might be like third-party fiber company. There's not only one, but two of them sometimes. So the person who precedes the next company, if they don't change the position of the company, it stays there forever and that's what you're talking about. So there needs to be, I mean, I've had this discussion with other people in the company, there needs to be better communication between not only National Grid but Verizon and so on. But I think we, like we tried to a couple of months ago, to try to get Verizon there, but we need to get everybody on the same page, not just Verizon, because they're the last ones to go. So it's everybody in between that needs to be on the same page as well. So I totally agree with you. I don't like looking at them and every time I see one, it's the same thing that comes up every single time.
And I know it's not, it's not your fault, but to be honest with you, I'm kind of hesitant to change poles because of what I see, but I know that the city clerk has reached out, because I did file a resolution on this, and Verizon and some, you know, they need like three months' notice or what have you. Maybe they should wait three months for payments for Verizon cellphone users or something. It just doesn't seem that they were very receptive. Cable, the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, it all comes down to that one site that everybody uses.
Right.
You know, if communication, like I looked at a couple of months ago when we came here originally, I could tell that 60 or 70% of the polls, the double polls that were out there weren't updated. So either it comes down to a group, one person from each company going out and checking this list and updating the list appropriately. I know when this issue arose the first time, we had half a dozen or so that were up to us and we eliminated all of them up to that.
Well, thank you.
You know, so, I mean, we see the problem, I mean, we don't have an issue of, you know what I mean, we'll do our part for sure, you know, what we have to do, you know, what we have to do, so.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. They know it's not your fault.
No, but, I mean, we can at least do our part and I think that's, it comes down to everybody else too, is doing their part as well, so.
Right.
It's just, excuse me.
Thank you, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Item number two, Sacred Heart Lofts, LLC 30 Adams Street, Milton, Mass.
I didn't do, we didn't do, we just did proponents, we hadn't done opponents on number one.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize that. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents to item number one? Seeing no opponents, I'll move on to item number two. Sacred Heart Lofts, LLC 30 Adams Street, Milton, Mass. for the removal of curbing as following. At 160 Linden Street, Seaberry Street, existing opening is 19 feet 6 inches. Curb to be removed is 2 feet 4 inches. There is no curb to be added. The combined opening proposed after alteration is 22 feet. On Pine Street, there is no existing opening. Curb to be removed is 22 feet. Curb, there is no curb to be added. Combined open proposed after alteration is 22 feet. Total for the 160 Linden Street proposal is 44 feet combined opening. The existing parcel is currently serviced by a 19-foot 6-inch curb opening on Seaberry Street. The applicant proposes to extend the opening by an additional 2 feet 4 inches for a total of 22 feet. Additionally, the applicant proposes to create a new 22-foot opening on Pine Street. The total opening for the location will be 44 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? If there are, please come down, state your name and tell us why you're proponent of this.
Scott Weech, Prime Engineering. We did the engineering for Sacred Heart Lofts, so we're representing them. And like the President just said, we are proposing a 2.4-foot opening along Seaberry and a new opening along Pine Street, and it was previously approved by the Traffic Commission on 11/18.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three. Jeffrey Furtado, 118 Primrose Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 118 Primrose Street, the existing opening is 19 feet. Curb to be removed is 7 feet. There is no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 26 feet. The existing parcel is currently serviced by a 19-foot curb opening. The applicant proposes to extend that existing opening by an additional 7 feet. The total opening for the location will be 26 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Please come on down and state your name and tell us why you're a proponent.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Furtado, the owner of the 118 Primrose Street. And we have five working adults that all have five vehicles and a four-car driveway, so the extra length would help to keep vehicles off the street and keep our nerves from being broken, because it did happen this summer, so. That's it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any other proponents to this public hearing? Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion to adjourn to the public, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There's no more items, now we'll move on to Committee on Finance. The council needs to take a break. You good? Public hearing is closed. City Council Committee on Finance, come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Cadim?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Are there any known sign of a citizen's input time? So we will go on to item number two. It's a resolution conveyed quarterly with the administration and representatives from the Historic Commission regarding funding plans for the renovation of the Bank Street Armory. It was adopted on August 13th, 2024. We're going to hold discussion. Would you like to come down to the table, please?
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Are there any council that have questions or you want to just get into, have them, can you just open it up for us and tell us where we are right now with the Bank Street Armory?
Good evening, Seth Aiken, City Administrator. With regard to the city's current position, the entity that has been interested in the armory to put, I guess what you could describe as a scholarly archive and museum in the space, remains interested. We were contacted by their point of contact, the person we've been dealing with today. Their architect did get back to them with some numbers and some ideas and we've, because it's kind of a New York and Stoughton-based group, so closer to Boston and of course New York, I think the next step is while they're looking at those numbers and figuring out if they believe it's feasible for their group, the mayor would ask that they also allow us to have some local folks that have that kind of capacity to do a job like that, look at the drawings and the ideas, because I think we believe that Fall River prices might be a little more down-to-earth than close to Boston and New York prices. So that is the update on that group right now. It still remains very much alive and from what I understand, they've finished their initial design process with their architect.
Thank you, Ms. Aiken. Counselor C five, Counselor Ms. Reprozo, you had your hand up, did you have a question?
The only thing that I would add is that there was a meeting and I was in attendance at that meeting, when we were told, and both gentlemen at the table were also at that meeting, we were told that we hear something, they'd get back to us. So what I'm hearing now from the city administrator is that that is still happening. Do we have a date of when they're going to make a decision? Because one of the things that Historic Society did, we added some members through a vote of this council, so they're eligible for more grants. So you're, they're kind of being held up from applying for different funding. When will we know? Or did we give them a deadline or?
So I guess reasonable people could disagree. I don't know that we're in a position to be giving them deadlines about this decision that they're going to make, but they are, they did notify us of this this morning. So this is shortly before lunch is when the mayor got that communication. I understand they're meeting in the next couple of weeks is what we're told. I don't know whether that means two weeks or three weeks or before Christmas, hopefully, with their membership to decide if they want to go forward. The mayor made the request that they give him their numbers and there was no response yet to that, which is, the last time I spoke to the mayor about that was around, I guess, 4:00 PM this afternoon. There hadn't been a response yet. So I don't know about a deadline, I don't know about the exact time when they intend to meet, but I do understand that there is going to be a meeting of their membership to make a decision.
Well, I just wondered if they said, we'll know by this time, not, I was giving them a deadline, but rather they saying, you know, we're going to meet with membership, whatever, we'll know by this, whatever. If they gave you a time.
So I think, from what I'm hearing, and again, it's all second-hand, from, you know, through the mayor who's, you know, trying to keep the circle fairly small so there's, you know, there's not, you know, mixed messages as there sometimes can be in these things. The, they communicated, we're going to sort of vote, and I think he countered with, can we see the numbers to see if we can give you a more realistic estimate of what it might cost to do that project here as opposed to where you are. So I don't know if his sort of request to them somehow would have changed their timeline, so it's hard to speculate.
One of the things that I was kind of surprised with was the basketball area and what is underneath that. I was kind of surprised with hearing, I thought that whole basement went through and that it was all cement foundation, and I guess that, that may not be accurate. And that was surprising to me. I don't have any other questions, I just kind of wanted to see where we were at on it, because, you know, to get funding for this, we need to start. If this doesn't go through, hopefully it will. I think, you know, that type of a museum, I think it's a great idea for the city and it brings a lot of people in. That's tourism, that's good. Mr. President, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Can the other two gentlemen at the table just give your name and what entity you're with? I know we know who you are, but just a little.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, Jason Bouchard-Naraki, 45 Bigelow Street. I chair the Historical Commission.
Alexandra Silva, 148 Purchase Street. I'm the president of the Board Directors of the Preservation Society of Fall River.
Thank you. Counselor C four, Counselor Kilby?
Just a couple of basic questions. First of all, how's your relationship with the administration right now, Mr., in terms of sharing information? But let me, please, continue. So that's very, very important. And at the meeting when this was brought up in terms of this entity that was interested in the armory, I didn't know about it. And as I said prior, this issue with the armory was a hard vote for me because I was in favor of selling it to the developers so it wouldn't sit there. So I'm looking, this is probably to everybody this question, but, so first of all, the relationship hopefully is well, because we want to see whether or not this, a project, a potential project moves forward which benefits the community through public funding, or a developer will acquire it and use, you know, use it for another use. So it was a surprise. So that's, it's a compounded question, that's the first question. The second thing is, I would like the administration, I know, to keep me more informed and other councilors more informed in terms of this entity that's interested. I really know not much about it. I know that's why we're here, but I would prefer to get notice whenever, it's our vote that is going to dispose of this eventually, it's our vote. So I just would like to be invited more, not invited, I'm sorry, to, just to get emails and copies of the proposals or interest in what they plan on doing, so. So with that said, the first question, I'm sorry, Mr. Naraki, if you could answer that.
Of course. No, our relationship with the administration is good.
Excellent.
We just recently worked with the mayor to, for our application for certified local government, which is, it's a program through the National Park Service and administered by the State Historical Commission. We just, as of last month, received our certification, which is great. It's, we are the 31st out of 350-plus communities in the state that is certified, so we have access to a specific pool of grant funds. And getting approval processes with the state, if it involves anything pertaining to the historic tax credits, if there's any questions related to the building, the armory has a preservation restriction on it held by the State Commission, that process is a little bit more, it's more expedited, because we are now officially a CLG community. So there are benefits for that. So, and that was a big project of ours to get that up and running between.
Excuse me, can you put the microphone a little closer so we can hear you?
Sure. That was a large project between the Historical Commission and also working with the Preservation Society to see that project through, so without the mayor's support on that. And then in addition to that, we do have other projects that we are, that we do keep involved in, the expansion of the Historic District in the Highlands, that's one of them, so there's a number of different other projects.
Okay. Would you ever be opposed, I know it's a hypothetical, if time goes by and plans, as you would like to see fit, your group, would you be, after all options are, you know, completed and it can't be done, would you still, would you go along with another alternative?
Of course. So part of what we had discussed when we were asked, when the commission was asked to weigh our opinion on the sale of the armory for an apartment building, we looked at the restriction, for example, and there were some questions that we had that weren't, we didn't have the answers right away involving the changes being made, proposed to be made to the building. So that's why we had asked, just to pause that sale, I know that was not the question, that was before the council, but just to pause that sale so we can get those answers and proceed. But, I mean, we, we would have to look at it, yes.
You would be amenable if things are exhausted. So maybe in retrospect, it was an appropriate vote to take. And I just, just want to see something done with the building like we all do and the community does, so. Thank you, Mr. Naraki. You're always well-spoken, you're always, you know, not to go personal stuff, but your father was my vice principal.
My father-in-law, yes.
That's more than many years ago, so. But thank you for your, what you do. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C two, Counselor Deion?
Hi, good evening. So when you say that the administration would like to work with local entities, are we speaking of the Historical Commission and the Preservation Society?
No, contractors, people that can actually do the work.
People doing the work. So I would like to think also that their input would be involved in the whole process.
Okay.
I mean, they obviously have the expertise, they're aware of the deed restriction, they just have, they're just a world of knowledge that most of us don't have. So for my part, I would encourage the administration to keep them in the loop and make them part of the discussion. And just on a personal level, I would like to publicly state that. So when we voted on selling or not selling the armory, the Historical Commission played no part in that vote. Their recommendation, they never were negative or positive about selling or not selling. Their recommendation was, pause the vote till we can get more information. We, as a council, took it upon ourselves to make the decision to sell or not sell the armory and ended, and it ended up not. There were people in the beginning who were, who voted yes to sell the armory. After making, taking a tour of the armory, people changed their minds, they felt it was worth saving. And I've said all along, moving forward, I can't, I don't believe that if we don't make the envelope better, that the building won't have more value to it. You know, any improvement you make, if you put a new roof, you put windows, the pointing, the heating system, it's going to add value to the building and I think more people would be interested in it. And at the time, we were told that the funding would be available, we would be able to get the funding to accomplish those goals. So I will ask if either of you, if anybody at the table is aware of, do we still have funding if that ends up? I understand this whole new project is a whole separate thing and needs to be explored before we go to step two, which used to be step one, but in the event that we would have to do that, is the funding still available?
In terms of, in terms of?
CPA funding.
Yeah, they could apply. Yeah. Hello. So in terms of like a backup plan, the same avenues of funding are there, if not more. As Jason mentioned, we're now a certified local government, so if all current, you know, proposals fall through and we have to start, you know, from the get-go, that's the funding that's used for, you know, studies, depending on the use that the city would want and conditions assessments. CPA funds will always be available as long as this Community Preservation Act is passed in Fall River, and that is, you know, done on a year-by-year basis at the will of that committee, which I'm also on. And once you narrow down the preferred use, that actually opens up different, all different pathways to funding. Like if it was indeed a museum, that would open up specific cultural funding sources, you know, from the state or even private organizations. And to your concern about the building envelope, I believe recently the ceiling, the higher roof was fixed, so it's at least not leaking water in that spot, and I think that was done within the municipal budget or the maintenance budget that's already being allocated for those types of projects. So in terms of its condition, at least it's not worsening in that regard. Of course, there's still much work to be done, but at least I think that was the primary concern for most people. And yeah, I think that answers all your questions.
Yeah, and I know one of the concerns also was a feasibility study, because as we know, the market everywhere has changed. I don't think that there's property anywhere that isn't worth something, just the way the market has gone and the influx of investors coming into the city, et cetera. So I would think that a feasibility study would still be a really important tool moving forward and instituting some plan. Would that be correct?
Yes, and we, and that's something that we can certainly apply for grants from the state for. They have, it's specifically for preservation planning. We had a, just a, I think we had a ballpark unofficial estimate for a feasibility, feasibility study for that, around $50,000 to $60,000. So that's, yeah. We've gotten some quotes.
Yeah, and a project of that size, that's short money.
Right.
Okay.
Step one money.
Yeah. Yeah. With that, I'll yield to now, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor C six, Counselor Ponti?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to take this back a little bit, because I'm a little confused. I know, Mr. Aiken, you mentioned work being done or bids. I'm confused. What is the vision? You're getting bids or you're getting proposals? Is that for somebody to restore something? Help me understand where we are at, because I missed it, totally missed it.
So there's an organization that has expressed interest in buying the armory. They have been to the site twice.
Yep.
They've asked that we not publicize the name of the organization or disseminate specific information about their interests.
Okay.
Because they're looking at several sites.
Okay.
They seem to be extremely interested in this site, because they've come back twice and the second time they came with an architect and drones and all sorts of equipment to try to assess as closely as they can the condition of the building. From there, their architect went back and prepared some initial, not really plans, drawings, ideas, kind of a proposal, and tried to attach some numbers to that proposal so they would understand what the cost of the project that they want to do would be. uh and tried to attach some numbers to that proposal, so they would understand what the cost of the project that they want to do would be. The uh, one of the the big things is what Councilor Prera alluded to, um which is that there's a strong possibility that the basketball court may not be on a foundation or slab or anything, it's just dirt. Um and so that would require potentially some some additional uh work that was unexpected. All that said, um I think the mayor's concern is that the numbers that they're looking at are New York and Boston numbers. So if you were to try to.
And this is the per- I'm sorry, mistaken, this is the purchaser who's looking to purchase, who's currently getting engineering bids and looking at a feasibility in terms of what it's gonna cost to do what their vision is, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And so I think the mayor's concerned that they're gonna be looking at numbers that are, you know, whatever percentage higher uh because of the proximity to Boston or New York, depending on who they're using and talking to, um without maybe realizing that, you know, we happen to live in a uh corner of Massachusetts that still has some value. Um and you can get value out of uh projects more than you might be able to the closer you get to Boston. Um so I think the mayor's uh thinking that, you know, if we can uh have a conversation um with their architect and the members of this group, um and show them that there are very skilled uh contractors in this area that would be able to do this work, uh and maybe be able to do it for less than you would if you were to hire a Boston firm. Uh that might interest them even more. Um and in addition to that, uh Jasmine, our grant person, uh who's really brilliant and incredibly effective, um is looking at, um you know, all sorts of uh avenues for grant money and earmark and whatever else that we might be able to um put towards, not necessarily this purchaser, but anybody that would want to buy this for a cultural purpose.
So I guess that my question is, is the administration's plan, obviously, the administration heard that the council, at least in the beginning part of this term, didn't have an appetite to sell it to the potential buyer. Uh obviously, you and the mayor and your team decided to, all right, let's explore other options, because it wasn't the will of the council at that time to sell it to the uh to the developer who submitted an offer to the city. In the case that this potential purchaser, whoever that may be's, vision doesn't work, or the cost is too expensive, is the plan again to just sit on it or just say, you know, throw a hail mary in the air or continue to find other ways to develop?
The plan is, at the very least, to to make sure it's buttoned up, right, to make sure it doesn't further degrade.
Um that's at the present, though. That's it, that's today.
And tomorrow and the next day.
Sure, but I I I I'm looking a little further down that road. I know that we have, okay, I don't mean to interrupt you.
So I I I understand what you're saying, that the that the administration heard that the council did not have a will to sell it. But I would not say that the administration changed its intent regarding the building based upon that. I think we can certainly disagree as to the best purposes.
Yep.
Um and I would imagine if either branch of government changes position simply because the other branch of government disagreed, that government would stop working, right? So so the the administration's position still is that it is not a feasible project for the city to do internally and that there isn't a clear purpose for what that building could and should be if we were to try to rehabilitate it internally. We still do believe that development of some, in some way, whether it's development with retail and cultural space, activity space, or some combination of that and some housing, is still the best way to do it with monies that are available to outside contractors who could get aid and get grants and get, you know, other things um for, you know, for the effort, right? Um that remains the administration's um belief. And I think that our understanding from the vote was not necessarily that the council was entirely opposed to selling it, but rather that the council was opposed to selling it for housing, exclusively housing. That if there was additional purposes, um that that actually might be a more reasonable conversation to have. So I think that's the the understanding that we're we're proceeding on.
Right, so the current plan, that's the current potential purchaser, that's before us, if they're not interested in moving forward, my question to you is, what's next?
What's next would be to um make sure, make sure the building is not gonna degrade any further, because there are some additional things we can do. If if we think the thing's gonna sit dormant for some period of time, six months, whatever that is, I think there's a few additional things we probably should do just to make sure that building is safe.
Is there anything we need to do right now?
No.
Okay, so it's.
The roof is good.
The roof is good, obviously, it's winterized, there's no heat going in that building.
Correct.
And it's secure, there's there's no issues with vandalism of any sorts.
Nope. Yeah, it is secured. Um we have people that go in there from time to time just to make sure there's nobody that's broken in, living there, uh a danger to themselves and to the building. Um you know, there are there are facilities people regularly going into that building, and there are projects around that building that have been on the facilities list, not currently, but but leading up to little patches and other things, just to make sure that that is a watertight building.
And nothing's really changed, to your point, mistaken, nothing's really changed from the administrative, uh the administration's point of view on the city having the financial resources to make that a community center or a veteran center or anything along those lines. That remains your position that you don't have the funding mechanism or the resources to do that right now.
Correct.
Okay. Um I I just want to say a a couple of things, you know, I. This kinda has the the rhyme of other decisions that councils in the past have made, to sit on real estate and then we have a police station like we have in Fall River, okay? We sold schools for four thousand dollars, they remove asbestos and sell them for a hundred, right? It was just the circumstances that we, that that council at that time was at and had to, you know, make a decision on what they were gonna do. The city has a terrible track record, it doesn't matter who the administration is, on disposing, managing and maintaining real estate. It's a really challenging expedition, process, whatever you want to call it, okay? So I agree with my colleague in seat four, that I I think we need to be aware of what's happening, and it isn't a type of pe- a real uh type of real estate that we want to just sit on for years. It isn't, it 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 has to be a goal, I think, of this term, that between the mayor and the city council, with work of the Historical Society and the Preservation Committee, that we do something with this building. We cannot sit on this thing for a decade, all right? We can't do it, we cannot do it. It's bad business, it's not in the best interest of the taxpayers. I get the uh the the emotional aspect of everybody played basketball there, you know, um, you know, mankind was here, wrestling in the gym, I I get all that, that's great, right? We all have been there. The reality is, we are not going, we really have to make this a goal of this council, I think, in this term, to this, with this mayor, to decide what we are doing with this building. We can't sit on it, it's going to be, I'm telling you, in five years from now, we're all gonna look back and say, it's just like the police station that has mushrooms growing on the floor, and and we don't know what to do with that. I'm not saying it's a t- same type of real estate, but I'm saying it has very similar components and attributes. It has no parking, the building's in tough shape, it's only, it's a niche-type property that only specific buyers are gonna be able to do something and develop. It doesn't have any windows, right? It has failed heating systems. It's a tough piece of real estate. So I I just, I just want to urge, like, for whatever it's worth, that we can't sit on this, we can't, we cannot do that. It's it's not in the best interest of the taxpayers. I applaud you for trying to find other ways to repurpose the building, utilizing the council's comments and saying, let's make it somewhat of whatever we want to do, and I I appreciate and applaud your efforts on that. But to my colleague's point in seat four, I'm gonna just say that I'm going to, I'll I'll continue to push for whatever I can to let's do something with that, because I'll tell you right now, if December of next year comes and we're in the same situation that the mayor and the administration and with the work of your two committees are out there trying to find buyers to maybe develop it, and hey, we realize it needs too much, I think we should make a move. And it might not be politically popular, it might not be something people like to hear, but if we have to, we have to put this back up for sale or accept an offer that is more appealing, that's something we we really need to consider. Because when, looking back at old memories, isn't doing anything for today's current tax base, right? So um maybe, might not be politically popular, I really don't care, but I'm just telling you my my opinion as a counselor, that we need to do, we need to figure out what we're doing with this, and we can't sit on it. So I don't know if you, if I interrupted you anymore, mistaken, if you had anything else to say.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I yield, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, do want to say there is parking at the.
Very limited.
About fifteen spots.
Not a lot.
And there are windows in the offices in front.
Point of clarification, a developer we all know very, very well, um brought up that issue to me in terms of parking, and they'd have, and to give a little hint, not gonna say his name, but they'd have to rent next door to someone who owns a big parking lot there.
Right, but there's parking there.
So, well, potentially, but not owned, so parking is an issue. Councilor Potty hit it right on the head, that was, it was a tough political vote for me. The administration wanted to move the building to the developer, so I thought it was appropriate vote. But correct, to Councilor Pott's point, um we have to make a decision on this again and revisit this. And, Mr. President, that's why we're here. We're here because you put it in finance for a discussion.
True.
But if a year goes by and it's still there next December with nothing, I mean, everybody has to come to a consensus that something has to happen.
I think we already agree on that, Councilor.
So, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor C six, uh five, Councilor Vice President Prera.
You know, I sit here and I say, oh, something needs to happen. Well, what have we been doing for the past year trying to make something happen? Because that is the last historic building that the city of Fall River owns. The last historic building. Think of all the buildings we've had that have been demolished or taken over. And this is the last one. It could be a community center, you could have a tourism uh office there. I mean, we have a Aviva Fall River office on Franklin Street i- in the middle of nothing. I mean, have it where you've got it connected to what you're doing on the waterfront. These people that came forward with interest, the mayor didn't go and search them, they came and said, we're interested in this building. And both historic and preservation were ready to run and do the things they needed to do to get the grants and money. Let's start working at that. You could rent out so many of those offices to things, it would, money would be coming in. Let them handle that. Like my colleague in seat number two said, they're more experts in it. So let them do it. But thi- this company came in, this may be viable, and it's going to be open to the public. It'll be a public location. That's my concern. We don't value our history in Fall River. We don't. We have a beautiful library that was a museum when it first started. The children's book started with two books, Alice in Wonderland and one other book.
Stay focused on it, Councilor.
And look at how it is now.
Stay focused on what's before us.
I get you, but I am very passionate about the history of this city, that we tend to, oh, we're gonna move and do this and do this, and I I agree, the police station, you and I voted to sell to different people, the votes weren't here, but I agree that should have been sold. However, I wish, Councilor Pott, more times people would listen to me than they have, but it is what it is. Um but I applaud the administration for working with this group. If they can come in and do something, fine. If they can't, then there's a whole committee that wants to save the armory. You know, they even did that years ago, like, somebody gave me a button, save the armory. So then they can go forward with it, but I do agree that the other colleagues should be made aware of what's transpiring with the armory. Maybe you could call everybody. I thought people were being notified as well. Obviously, I'm hearing today that they were.
It's a confidential thing, I guess.
Right, but to know that at least somebody's interested. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor C eight, Councilor Simpson.
Thank you, Councilor President. So I have to say, um I agree with Councilor Potty that um we've got to move this project. I think, though, and I have to say this, that we all want to save the armory. I was not for um not selling it, I thought it should be sold to the developer to save the armory. I think having we done that, it would, construction would be underway, we would have been moving, we can save the armory. I think the difference is, what are the uses for it, and and that's what we're looking at. I mean, now we sit, a year later, we didn't sell the armory, not much has happened, not the fault of you, but now we find that the floor is dirt, which is probably why the floor was buckling and they're so bad. So are we even gonna have those people that were interested before want to come back, because it's more money to put in? So I think that we all want to save the armory, we don't want to see the armory sit there and destroyed. What that use for the armory, I think that could be up for debate. But I I guess my question is, um for the city administrator, has anyone else besides um this company um come in and asked or excited that it's back on the market or will be back on the market, or people knocking down the doors to buy it or or use it? I I guess that question's for anybody, I mean, what what are people thinking? It's there.
We have not been contacted by anybody else. I know there was talk of a nonprofit being formed during the conversations in front of this council. We haven't heard from them. Um I would imagine, you know, maybe they're just trying to figure out where to go next, ducks in a row, that sort of thing. Um but the only uh group that we have heard from is this organization.
Um and those are my concerns, is that the longer we wait, the more damage is done, the more we keep having people inspect, the more things are gonna pop up, and um it's it's just a shame, it's a shame. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C one, Councilor Cadine.
Thank you. So I wasn't really gonna s- speak much, 'cause I feel like we're just going around and around on this topic and not really gaining any new information. Um so the the one question I I did have, and I I think you folks kinda alluded to it, but I just want to make sure that we we do get it on the record. So the conversation that's taking place between the mayor, and maybe you don't know this officially, but um conversations that's taking place between the mayor and the organization that's interested in the building, um seems like, I guess, cost may be something that uh might be a concern to them. So are we, I guess, articulating to them that there is potentials for the the grant money they they understand? And I I know you mentioned they're located in Stoughton as well, so I'm sure they're familiar with CPA funds of those that nature. So that there's, I guess there's a potential, not not committing to a dollar amount, but there's a potential for a private-public partnership in some fashion?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, the mayor's made that very clear, that um we'll, we'll do what we we must uh to help if, you know, if if the resources are out there, um you know, this is something we're looking at and have been looking at. This has been a significant part of of Jasmine's work uh over the last couple of months, is looking at what are the opportunities. The unfortunate thing is, is when it comes to just basic restoration, there's a lot of stuff out there, but the 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 dollar amounts are just not that high, considering what needs to be done, right? There's there's definitely some very generous grants and and opportunities, but when you're looking at a, you know, ten to fourteen million dollar project, you're just not gonna, you know, you'd have to put together a lot of ten thousand dollar grants to get there. Um there are other ways to to do it, obviously, community preservation money is is a significant part of that. Um so yeah, we've made that very clear, we continue to make that very clear. It's the reason why um the mayor is asking them for the plan and the drawings, 'cause, you know, not only through grants, but can we can we show them that this is a, this is a more economical place to do business and to build and to rehab. Um so we're trying to attack it from from all the ways.
And I guess just to, I guess, make a statement, well, I I guess my second question, did you say this, there's no heat on in the building? So it's just essentially cold storage or no?
It's winterized, so I think, I I don't think there's any liquid in pipes, there's no heat on. I I think there's, it's basically in stat- in status.
Okay. Um I guess, you know, my my own, I guess my only statement would be that we we might want to consider just minimal heat, right, to, for just internal, um I guess, saving the building from deteriorating even more. I know the envelope itself is secure now that we have the roof and and potentially, I guess, I don't know if the windows are.
Windows are sealed.
Are are good, they are sealed. Um but some some type of heat, and I know that's just another expense for us, but uh just to make sure that, you know, you're gonna get the paint peeling, which is probably minimal, 'cause you're gonna have to do demo work there anyways, but um that's the only thing I would I would suggest. But I guess to get, piggyback on what my colleague in seat two had mentioned, and then my colleague in seat, um what's that, eight, seven, six, you're six?
Yeah.
You're six, okay. Uh had mentioned, and then I uh, I I know you had asked the question, what are we looking to do? But I I I think internally, and it's just whether or not we want to invest uh resources into this building, knowing that there's potentially somebody that might be interested in the building. But from my standpoint, I I agree with uh my colleague in seat two, that a feasibility study is probably the most advantageous item to take on, uh just just to be able to see what our options are, try to get some public input in terms of what, you know, the residents want to see in there, and and if it comes back, it's housing, then then at least we know um that's what folks want to see. Uh I, to me, I think that building has a lot more potential than housing, I think it's just gonna require uh a a greater partnership to, for everybody to be creative and get people to the table and and kinda help facilitate maybe some of the development that's needed in that building, so it's not gonna be easy. But um to me, it's just more than memories, I didn't realize mankind was there, I mean, I put mankind higher than Hulk Hogan. But I I, listen, I I, you know, Paul Hart played there, so uh.
He played everywhere.
That that. He's way above Hulk Hogan in my. He's way above Hulk Hogan in my book, so, um, you know, I'm all about making sure that we maintain that building. But it, but it truly isn't about just the memories. I think it's, to Council Pereira's point, it's, it's really truly the last historic building that we, that we own, and we wanna make sure that we do it right. Too often that, you know, these historic buildings just either get demolished or, you know, we're looking at all these old photos and saying, why can't we bring these buildings back? I mean, they don't, they don't make these buildings anymore, so. Um, I, I understand it needs to be economically feasible for both the developer, and it needs to make sense that we're not, you know, wasting taxpayer money. But I, I, I think it goes more beyond than just that memories of that. And I think a lot of the generations growing up don't even have any memories of the, of the, the building itself. It's been closed that long, so. Uh, from my standpoint, I think we just need to make sure we do the right thing. But it's gonna take some hard work and, and a lot of facilitating from, from different organizations to get people to the table to, to make it interested, interesting. And, and we just, we just gotta recognize if we wanna truly see this flourish like the potential it has, we might just have to invest money, you know, public money, taxpayer monies in, into that. And so, I for one would support that. In terms of parking, I mean, we can, we can talk about parking, you know, whether you do housing there, you're gonna need parking for housing, so it, it, you know, it works either way. If, if it's office space, if it's a community center, you, we need the parking regardless of what it is. So, it's just, let's make sure we get it right. And hopefully, you know, the organization that's interested in it continues to be interested in it and pours the money, and, and then we're talking about this next year when the ribbon cutting's gonna be, so. With that, I yields.
Thank you, Council. Just wanna point out that Council Hart and I did play there on the same team.
Oh, man, I knew you played.
During those basketball games, there was wrestling matches and boxing matches that did occur on occasion, just so you'll know.
Three for one.
Just so you'll know. Councilor C two, Councilor Kadeen, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I don't know if you're at liberty to answer the question or not, but the interested party, would they be, and I don't know a different way to ask the question, a for-profit or a nonprofit?
Um, it, thank you. Yeah, so they're a nonprofit. I don't know that. So, the, the thing about nonprofits, sorry, is that the property that they own is not taxable, right? There's no real, you know, contribution to city services, right, by law, unless they agree to a pilot. From what I understand, there are aspects of this organization's operation that actually could generate some revenue, but I don't know the extent of it. So, that was really the basis for my hesitation. I also try to think before I answer some of these questions.
No, no.
They're, they're tricky sometimes.
But, well, the reason I asked was, I mean, if the, if these people are coming out of New York or whatever, obviously, they've been successful in other places. With everything on the waterfront that's happening and going to be coming our way, I would think that could be something that would attract people. The more people you attract to the city, the more people there are to spend money in the city. So, in, in that regard, it's gonna generate revenue for the city. But the main reason I asked that was being a nonprofit would put them in a position that they are able to apply for grants and funding that somebody else wouldn't be able to apply for, which would help the process.
You yield, Council?
I yield.
Councilor C six, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, what's the process for getting a feasibility study done?
There's a number of, so, we have a couple, they're not really blanket, our blanket contracts. There's a couple, what's the name for them? We did an RFP about a year ago for, to have on-call engineers and design services. We would probably look there first to see if we had anybody in that group of on-call designers and architects to see if any of them has experience with historical structures, especially, you know, large historical structures. I think, you know, somebody that just does a lot of historical residence work is different than this, you know? The stonework, the roof, the, you know, the flooring and all that sort of thing. That's the first place we would look. If we didn't have somebody that was appropriate, we'd probably have to go outside, do another RFP for that, 'cause of the cost. But either way, I think within a few months, we could have somebody.
So, is your, is your, is your priority going to be to do a feasibility study? Or do you need a vote from this council for the support to get that done?
I don't know that, so, given those two options, I don't know that I would pick either one, to be very honest, and here's why. One, I, I feel like we're, you're, you're sort of asking me for an opinion on something that there just hasn't been conversation about on the sixth floor as to like what happens if, if this doesn't happen. My sense, and I've talked to the mayor generally, is that we're gonna make sure the building is protected. No matter what, we'll make sure the building's protected. The next step is the thing that there's a lot of different opinions about. So, if it's a question of a feasibility study, you know, that probably is the next step. But if there's a different opinion and the mayor decides, no, you know, I'd, you know, I have somebody else I'm ta- I've been talking to or I know of something else, or I wanna put the RFP back out, I think the, the issue we have that, that may have been a little bit forgotten is that leading up to the last proposed purchaser that we had, the one whose, whose proposal failed, there was a couple folks before that that did look at it, that do, did due diligence and wanted to, to think about this as a, as an event space, as a retail space, as a mixed-use space with some retail and some event or cultural space, and formed the opinion that it just wasn't feasible. So, I think one of the reasons why the, this administration probably hasn't done the feasibility study or an update to the one that you've all seen that said it had zero value is that it feels like we would just be confirming what we already know. But if the council needs the feasibility study from an independent person in order to confirm that, that's probably the right thing to do. But I would have to get the mayor's go-ahead to do that.
That was a great answer.
Thank you.
To a very simple question. Now, I am very, I'm more animated about it now than I was when I asked the question. So, let me, let me break that down a little bit. Would, would, would you say that you probably wanna hold off on the feasibility study right now until you find out what this possible purchaser will do?
Yes.
Okay. So, when do you expect that timeline to be concluded?
I think we'll know in a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. So, in a case in a couple of weeks, and the council meets again in a mo- in, in a couple of weeks, not saying you'll have an answer by whenever we meet next, would it be the will of the co- I, I mean, I, I'd put this in, maybe in the form of a motion if I could get a second, that if the current potential purchaser is not interested in moving forward to the next phase of a purchase, would be to urge the administration to put an RFP out or, or find a, a company to get us a feasibility, feasibility study so we can find out possibly what the highest and best use of that building would be? I think that's probably in the best interests of the community.
Well, we're just holding discussion right now. If you wanna file that type of motion, we'll do a regular meeting and a resolution.
Why wouldn't we do that in finance?
We're just holding, we're just holding discussion on it.
The motion is sent to the administration.
There's no action to be taken on this.
Can I throw something out?
That doesn't make any sense, Mr. President. We, we don't have it in full council.
You wanna fi- you wanna make a motion, file a resolution, let everybody vote on it.
All right, well, that's just delaying the process, it's ridiculous.
It's a council meeting tonight, you can do it tonight, Council, it's fine.
It's not in full council, it's not on the agenda in full council. How am I gonna make a, a vote?
You can put a resolution in.
You wanna refer this item to full council tonight from the.
You can make a resolution, whatever you want, Council, in a regular council meeting. Doesn't have to be on the agenda to make a resolution on something.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Akin.
I was just gonna say, you could certainly direct the city to do that or urge the city to do that. The wrinkle I might add is, is I almost feel like the Preservation Society and the Historical Commission, given the new status of local government and the opportunity to seek grants to support these things, and the expertise, as Council Dion pointed out, in historical rehabilitation and standards, might actually be in a better position to put together a spec and commission that feasibility study.
I agree with you.
It, it would also be something that, it's not that the city couldn't find the sixty thousand, it's that, that's not an insignificant amount of money to add in when the budget is already kind of set. And, you know, if we can partner with folks that have the opportunity to seek grant funding for that sort of thing, it would certainly, you know, be less of a burden. So, there's a number of reasons why I think to, to put it on the city exclusively maybe may not be the most effective course of action.
Okay. I'll write a resolution, I'll give it to the clerk, and we can add it to the city council's full council, which I think is silly. I don't know why we can't just make a motion here, table it in the Committee on Finance and ask the.
You can table it in Committee on Finance, Council, but to make them take action on something that they're not gonna have any action taken to it is, is, is what it's silly. You can file a resolution, you can table it in the Council Finance.
May I? I think the appropriate thing is to table this. And, I mean, we have a representative from the administration, and this, this issue requires a response from the mayor in a timely fashion.
It's the will of the council. Councilor C six will have the floor.
I'll yield, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council.
What if I just report back on the next meeting? Have a conversation with the mayor? Say, hey, you wanna do a feasibility study? He says yes or no, and I'll tell you on the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilor C two.
Yeah, I think the idea of putting it in the hands of the Historical Commission and Preservation Society is a very wise statement. They do have the ability to apply for the funding to pay for the feasibility study, so it would not have to come out of the budget or out of the city coffers. And if I'm not mistaken, if memory serves me correctly, and if I'm wrong, feel free to tell me, I don't believe what we got before was a feasibility study, I believe it was an appraisal.
That's true. Yeah, it was an appraisal, 'cause there was no speculation as to what might be done with the building, just what the cost of replacement would be or rehabilitation to the, to the, to the former condition.
Is that a fair statement?
So, for, I mean, from my point of view, I think the resolution might be put in the hands of the Historical Commission as opposed to the city for the feasibility study. They have the expertise, they have the ability to, to apply for the funding. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Council. There being no further questions?
Motion to table.
Coming down, motion to table has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn Finance.
Motion to adjourn Finance has been made, is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Committee on Finance is now adjourned. Regular city council meeting will begin at seven o'clock. City Council, please come to order, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilors Kadeen?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Here.
Panti?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for salute to the flag.
For the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised, such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Nicholas Silva to Chief of Emergency Medical Services.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations.
Beautiful family. Cute little girl, little ribbon in her hair. The shoelaces match her ribbon too, so cute. Family, girl. The ribbon and the shoelaces match her.
Madam Clerk?
Item two of the mayor's requests for confirmation of reappointments to the Library Board of Trustees. The first is for Catherine Clarkin.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second is for Sharon L. Quinn.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The third is for Fran E. Reckland.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor in an order accepting a donation in the amount of seventy thousand dollars from the Josephine M. Turner Trust to be used for general maintenance and repair of memorials and structures at Oak Grove Cemetery.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances.
Motion for a fee analysis?
Second.
Motion to refer to Committee on Order to Legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's up to you. Does the council need the clerk to read the entire resolution?
No.
You can just read abbreviation, Paul.
So, the.
Motion to adopt.
The resolution is asking that the council urge the approval of the three M, three-ten CMR nine-point-two-one variance request sought by Fifty-Two Ferry Street LLC.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like, could, we have, Council Kadeen filed this? If he just wants to give a brief rundown of what this is for?
If you'd like to.
I think it's a good idea, but.
Yes, I, I was, I was approached by Mike Lund, 'cause he's looking to get support for a new marina in front of his, his business. So, I put this forward, I think it's just gonna be, the fact that we have a, a new marina out there would attract to the, the businesses down on the waterfront and be beneficial. So, I told him I would absolutely file it. I, I think him and his family do a phenomenal job down off of Ferry Street and Boarding, Boarding Light Marina, so I, I think this would be a benefit for, for the city.
I agree. Thank you for filing it, I, I think it's a great, a great idea so far. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Council. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six is a citation for Elsie Odet for the celebration of her hundredth birthday.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven is the order granting permission to Mass Electric Company for the two new solely-owned poles and one anchor on High Street.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the order granting permission to Sacred Heart Lofts LLC for the removal of curbing at one-sixty Linden Street.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine is the order granting permission to Jeffrey Frittato for removal of curbing at one-eighteen Primrose Street.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt chief's report has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven is the application for the renewal of an auto repair shop license at eleven-thirty-eight Pleasant Street. We did receive recommendations of denial by the police chief and the city collective.
Motion to refer to regulations? Second.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Regulations has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have claims?
Motion for the Corporation Council.
Second.
Motion for the Claims to Corporation Council has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirteen was a request, um, from a business owner regarding the lack of emergency exit easement at two-thirty-nine Bedford Street. We did receive a follow-up email, um, at the end of the day yesterday. Um, the gentleman is requesting that this item be granted to withdraw.
Granted to withdraw.
Motion to grant lease to withdraw has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a drain layer application.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the drain layers application has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have minutes of the zoning board of appeals.
Motion accept, place on file?
Second.
Motion accept the minutes, accept the place on file has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have minutes of the Committee on Finance held on November nineteenth.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council held on November nineteenth.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a communication from DEP regarding a, the responsibility of diesel fuel release, um, at fourteen Rodman Street.
Motion accept, place on file?
Motion to accept and place on file has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Just a question.
Councilor in seat one, Councilor...
Is that automatically get referred to the Board of Health?
I believe they were also notified.
Okay, thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nineteen is, um, on behalf of GEI Consultants, a communication and notice of a release abatement measure plan for one-twenty Charles Street.
Motion accept, place on file?
Motion accept and place on file has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, we have the mayor's communication in an order accepting a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars for the fall of the public library from Climate Democracy.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, on the motion, Councilor seat seven?
Just curious, the five hundred dollars to use the library in a general sense? Any particular purpose?
We do have a communication from the library administrator. It simply says that it would be used by the library.
Good enough. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Motion has been made and seconded. To adopt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have.
Motion adjourned.
Hold on, we have a resolution to file, Council?
I mean, yeah, sure. I read it. I wrote it.
Well, if we adjourn, you're not going to be able to put it in, so now it would be the time.
Can you, can you read it?
Can you give it to the clerk?
Give it to the clerk. I don't know if she can read my handwriting.
You can read it, and then she can interpret it, whatever.
I like when Councilor seat six reads.
I like when elves tell stories. That's impressive. Really?
Parochial school?
Till fifth grade.
Madam Clerk?
Whereas the Bank Street Amory is currently reviewing a bid for the Bank Street Amory,